Ready to start when you are.
Okay, go live, please. All right, are we good back? All right. Welcome back, everybody. This is, uh, good morning. It is, uh, this is Tuesday, uh, May 19th, 2020. Welcome, this is the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Washoe County. With that, um, we will have, uh, our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Solero. Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. With that, Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Certainly. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present via telephone.
Thank you. Von Hartung.
Present telephonically.
Jeannie Herman.
Here.
Assistant County Manager, Dave Solero.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney, Dave Watzvial, or do we have Nate Edwards?
No, it's Nate Edwards. I'm present via Zoom. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate. I'm Nancy Peart, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. All right, Mr. Manager, um, can we move into item three, please?
Absolutely. Item number three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay. Before we go into public comment, I want to make a couple of comments, um, in regards to, uh, potential discussion about a public comment being submitted this morning. All public comments should be, as is posted in our agenda, should be provided by 4:00 PM previously on the day previous to our meeting. There was public comment submitted by a commenter this morning that, that it was a video that was asked to be replayed this morning. The video will be placed on the record. However, we have not had a chance to review that video. None of the commissioners have a chance to see that video. That video will be placed on the record, and the public commenter will be able to make note of that, that video during their public comment. But that is, uh, the decision, uh, we have made, um, because we have that, uh, didn't have that ability to review that prior to, um, its submittal. And like I, it is mentioned and written in our agenda, that needs to be provided by 4:00 PM, um, the day previous. So with that, Madam Clerk, um, I have a few voicemails shown in here, so I will let you start with our first voicemail, and I believe it's Danielle Murillo. Is that correct?
Correct.
So if we can play the voicemail for, um, it's Danielle Murillo.
Yes, my name is Danielle Morello. My father, Daniel Morello, was shot and killed on February the 1st by Reno PD. This is to go to the meeting on the 19th, uh, for the commission. I have a problem with the fact that we, none of us that have lost people to Reno PD or Sparks PD can get, uh, body cam videos released, so we know whether our loved ones that were shot and killed were, it was justified, especially, you know, when you hear things like, uh, somebody that didn't stop when they were told to stop, was shot nine times when they weren't armed with any weapons or anything. Now, I understand, I was told that my dad had a knife, and he was shot twice and killed, but I don't understand why being bagged or non-legal force was used when it's so readily available. There's just too many, uh, people being shot until, when they're called for, people threatening to commit suicide, those people are shot and killed. Well, they wanted to die, I guess, so they died by cop, but still, I want to know whether my father's death was justified or not. And now, I have, uh, he has a niece, I have a cousin that works for the Sheriff's Department in Missouri. Uh, her name is Sabina Jacks. At least let her see whether it was a justified shooting or not, if you don't want to let us see it, because then we can, we can, uh, rest in peace, and we cannot be upset at Reno PD if it was justified. But, uh, he was bipolar, the same as I am, that's where I got it, and he was crippled in one leg and needed surgery, so I don't understand, because, uh, he couldn't have ran at them because he was crippled in one leg, so it doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense to any of his family members. He has always before turned himself into PD, so none of it makes any sense. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Next, we have a, a voicemail from Susan. Hopefully, we have a last name.
Hi, my name is Susan Klop. I'm calling because I would like to know what you guys are going to do as far as the District Attorney's Office and the police killing people. I am Makaiya Lee's mom, who was suicidal, not homicidal. He was not a threat to anybody in the community. And they shot my child, and the DA cannot even tell me who to go to when they're not doing their job, because they're elected officials. So, if anybody could tell us who we're supposed to go to, who polices the police and the DA when they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as all of the officer-involved shootings, as well as, uh, the way that they treat people. Again, my name is Susan Klop. My son was Makaiya Lee. They murdered my son on January 5th.
All right. And next, we have a voicemail from Anne Marie Grant.
County Commissioners Meeting, 5/19/2020, Agenda Item 3. Anne Marie Grant, Sister of Thomas Purdy, hogtied by Reno PD, then asphyxiated to death by Washoe County Deputy Paul Hubbell, Andre Silva, Brendan Glenn, Timothy Singer, under the supervision of Sergeant Wayne Wester, on 10/4/2015. Make no mistake, your Washoe County Medical Examiner stated my brother would not have died if but for the restraint and physical force used against him by deputies and Reno PD. Sheriff Balaum's agency is the lead investigating agency on the IAD shooting. I asked the sheriff, why has the body cam footage not been released? Clark County releases the names of cops involved in shootings within three days along with body cam footage. His agency also was the lead on the 3/31/2018 shooting of Nicholas Sedano. No updated information has been released to the public in two years, one month, and 20 days. Is that what you call transparency and accountability? Balaum's agency also is the lead investigator in the officer-involved shooting of Jose Dominguez, killed by Sparks PD 4/28/2019. Same MO. Release the initial police narrative to the media and then never any follow-up. I am fully cognizant of the fact that there's the two-year statute of limitations on excessive force wrongful death lawsuits. That wouldn't play a role in law enforcement. DA Chris Hicks taking a ridiculously unacceptable length of time to say the shootings are justified. Let's be real, we all know that is what will happen and has happened in the past. Perhaps if cops involved in killing community members weren't dumped right back on the streets within days of killing someone, Michael Lee would be alive. I heard Sparks PD Officer Brian N. Sullivan and his partner shot 57-year-old Rolando Brizuelo 16 times in the back, head and neck, in his own home. Of course, that investigation hasn't been completed in over two years either. It's been said Officer Sullivan also shot Micah, who was 18 years old, in the midst of a mental health crisis. Some may be fooled and think there are independent investigations into officer-involved shootings in Washoe County. I know it's just smokescreens and mirrors. Sheriff Balaum promoted a deputy to sergeant who was not only arrested for DUI, but also crossed taxpayers' money to pay a lawsuit against the county, because Sergeant Wood felt the need to order his canine to attack a surrendering man. I know, this is who you choose to promote. As I stated to the commission when I flew in from Boston last year, you all dictate the budget for the sheriff's office, and you are all mandated under NRS to 11.020 once every three months to inquire into the security of the jail and the treatment and condition of the prisoners. An update on the commissary fund isn't cutting it. I challenge Balaum to allow you access to the incarcerated at par. Only they can tell you how they are really treated. I previously provided you pages and pages upon comments from people who live in Washoe County, and their way...
All right. And Ms. Mur, uh, Anne Marie Grant did submit, uh, a video this morning that will be placed on the record in regards, in, in connection with her public comment, um, for the record, and can be referred to back, uh, at a later time and date. Next, we have a voicemail from Daniel Purdy.
County Commissioners Meeting, Agenda Item 3. Daniel Purdy, for the record, brother of Thomas Purdy, killed by deputies at Washoe County Jail. I couldn't help but notice a particular commissioner comment that my voicemail last week was from a special interest group. Let me be crystal clear. I am part of no group. I am the brother of a human being that was hogtied by your local police department, Reno Police. He was then put face down in the prone position while hogtied, still nearly 40, 40 minutes later, and smothered to death. Forty minutes is a long time, longer time than some of your meetings you hold. Where is the sheriff's annual report on the jail's death? Four people have died up at the jail under his watch. The NRS was created for a reason. It's time to do your job when it comes to them, so no other family has to see their loved one being killed on video.
All right. Do we have any, uh, do we have any public comment via Zoom?
Not that I see.
Okay, seeing no public comment, um, no further public comment, Madam Clerk?
And I have no emails, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we will bring it back to the board, and we are on to item four. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, that brings us to item number four, which is Commissioners, County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information on our topics for future agendas.
All right. Madam Vice Chair, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just a couple of things I would, as we look at moving into further expansion of our restaurants, and I know that, um, some restaurants are open with 50% capacity, I'm wondering if it would not benefit these restaurants to allow them to expand their outdoor space into maybe some of the parking spaces that they have, so that we could, um, so that they could serve the full capacity. As you know, I have expressed concern repeatedly about the problem of people getting put back to work, and if we're only, um, allowing restaurants to serve a 50% capacity, that means they're probably only going to be hiring back a 50% number of people, and I would like very much to see, um, if we can't figure out a way to allow them to ex, expand into so, tables into some of their parking lot areas, so if we could look into that as we start going. I know, Mr. Chair, you're going to be looking at a number of things this weekend, and that, that's one thing that I think would be extremely beneficial to our restaurants who are not being able to open. And I have had a couple constituents contact me and ask me about that, and I do think it's an excellent idea if we could move forward on that. So as you look at that, this in your process that you're doing in the next few days, I would appreciate it if you'd consider that.
Absolutely.
And then, um, I know there's also been some discussion, I know I've received a number of emails from constituents who are concerned that they're going into grocery stores and they're going to pharmacies, and people are not wearing masks, and I, I know the governor has not made masks mandatory. Technically, I suspect, and although we don't have a, a district attorney's opinion on this, technically, I suspect the county could probably say masks are mandatory, but I don't know how we would ever enforce that. But I wonder if it isn't possible for us to look at requiring grocery stores and pharmacies to require that people who are coming into their stores wear masks. Those two areas are where people have to go, and are most, and the people, obviously the people going into pharmacies are frequently the most vulnerable people, and so I wonder if we can't, um, somehow look at the possibility of saying to grocery stores and pharmacies, please make sure everyone who comes in wears a mask. And so, again, a second thing that I know, as you, Mr. Chair, I know you don't have anything on your plate. You have absolutely nothing to, to do this, and so, especially with all the work you've been doing on this, I just think those are two areas that we might very seriously take a look at. I think that masks in grocery stores and pharmacies could in fact be enforced. I'm not sure how that would happen in, um, uh, in parks, for instance, or, I mean, I, I don't think we have the, the sheriff deputies and the Reno police and the Sparks police to require that kind of enforcement. I'd be really worried about that, but I do think the more enclosed things of restaurants and, I mean, uh, grocery stores and pharmacies is probably really key. So those are the two issues. I have a couple of other issues, but I want to talk, I, when the sheriff is on, making his presentation, so I'll let them go till then. Thank you.
Commissioner Herman.
All right, and I'm with you, um, Madam Vice Chair, um, in supporting your businesses and getting, um, getting people back to work and...
Excuse me, let me interrupt. I just received a, uh, email from, uh, Darren, our sheriff, saying that we're muted and they can't hear us.
Oh. On the Zoom meeting?
It's not muted, so.
Uh-oh.
Another participant said they're fine, they can hear.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna...
Okay, it's been fixed. He's just come back and said it's been fixed.
Good, all right, so we've good now, I mean, all right.
Okay, sorry.
Commissioner Herman, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Floor is yours again, ma'am.
So I was just saying, I, I agreed with Commissioner Burke Bigler on the supporting your businesses that are coming back online, and, um, and, uh, you know, because just like she said, every, every business that's only on half, half duty, you know, um, needs all the help they can get to get all their employees back on the payroll, so we need to do our share too. And, um, so, I, I have a big issue with, um, this long extended inability of people to actually, I mean, people have talked to me so many times about this. They're, they're very concerned that their rights are being taken away and that, that it's about time they are allowed, maybe just 10 in the room, or maybe keep them six feet apart, but, um, just to, to allow them to come and, and voice, because there's no other ones, they're all online, or, you know, on, over the phone, Zoom, whatever, and they're, they're feeling very desperate, that they're not being able to, to speak openly and, and, and do their normal thing, you know? I mean, when an issue like, especially the, the last one on that, um, development, uh, in Pleasant Valley, they, they were, you know, quite a few people that wanted to come to the meeting and be seen and be heard, and, uh, I, I think we should be, because, you know, we're lighting up on the restaurants and that sort of thing, and they just feel like we're, we're really pressuring them into submission or something, you know, they're, they're getting real concerned about it. So I think we better start thinking about some of those issues as we're coming through this, because, because we don't want to be unconstitutional. We swore to uphold our constitution statewide and the federal. So I think that, uh, this is very, very important to do something about. I know that, that, um, we should be able to get, I mean, the first ten, something like that, or, or every, every six, six feet away from each other and that sort of thing, so I think we've been at this long enough to know that we have a way to do that. So I've been hearing a lot of incidents about, um, our ballots. There, there's been a lot of noticing of ballots being found in garbage cans, and, and the post office has a whole bunch of backlog of people they can't find, and so we sure want to make sure that none of those ballots end up in the wrong hands. So I think that that's an important issue also. So I'll quit right now. Thank you.
You don't, okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of things, but I want to start with, um, King Bob Harmon from the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, PIO, uh, the very best, he's retiring, and, um, Bob has been a, a wonderful colleague and a dear friend, and so, uh, Bob, if you're listening, I, I just, um, genuinely have appreciated the relationship that we've had over the years. Uh, you've, you've just really kept everyone very well informed, um, and, and so I just, I want to thank you, and I'm looking forward to working with Sarah Johns. Of note, Sarah was one of my students at UNR, and so I, uh, I know, um, how conscientious she is, she's a, she's going to be a wonderful addition to the SO, so that's that. For staff, I, I know, I know commissioners have gotten a bunch of these, who handles complaints for businesses that are non-compliant? And, and, and I'll give you an example. Um, I got a, contacted by, not, not a business that's necessarily has a, a huge presence in the public, but they do have a small presence in the public, where, um, there were just non-compliance in the office of, of not wearing masks, um, and, and, and et cetera, and so how do we, how do we approach that? It would be good to have some kind of a protocol. And, and, and also businesses that, um, people, people are just uncomfortable with. I don't, I don't know the, that there is any protocol to where we can send them, or, or who does the inspections, or if there are even inspections, but it would, um, it'd be interesting to just maybe have a conversation with the Health Department, or maybe some of the regulating agencies as to how they'll deal with that. Um, and then, um, with respect to testing, um, how should we direct people to get tested? Um, I was contacted by, uh, a family that there were eight people, also, one of the, uh, parents was tested positive, and the other members needed to be tested, but they were told that since they weren't symptomatic, that, uh, they just needed to quarantine. And, and they finally, uh, went out and got tested in, in other places, and come to find out all eight, um, sadly, tested positive. So what's the procedure that this family might be able to use to, um, do they all have to quarantine in this small house, or would they be able to use the quarantine units that we have over on Edison, and, and how would that process work? So maybe it's just some clarification that I need, or some direction, Mr. Chairman, as to, uh, where do we, where do we send these folks? How do we, how do we, um, how do we, you know, give them advice? And then, and then the final thing to Commissioner Burke Bigler's point, I think that that's a great idea for restaurants, but I also think taverns and bars and others can open up with what I'll call an al fresco option. I think that there are a number of street that could be closed off, not just parking lots, but streets, literally, uh, that, you know, small sections, where these businesses could open up and have, uh, outdoor venues to get their clientele coming back and, and keep these businesses viable. I'm sure everyone knows that if we keep them locked down too much longer, lose them, and then, and then once we lose them, um, the, it'll just, it'll be a landslide, unfortunately. They'll, one will lead to another, and it'll, it'll, they'll go exponentially, so I know how hard you're working, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I know you and I have had a number of conversations, and I just, I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's doing, and, you know, safety is first and foremost, but we also have to understand that these folks have to get back and support their families, because many of them still are ineligible for, uh, any kind of supplements, and they're just living day to day. All I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I get the same complaints about, uh, people discouraged, frustrated, um, that other people aren't complying with the mask directive, which obviously is not a law, and I have some real, it makes me really nervous to put law enforcement in charge of stuff like that. I think they have enough of their hands full, and I don't think that's the model we want to go to. But I, what I'm telling people in the interim, um, Madam Vice Chair, and this might help you, because, you know, this is going to take us some time to turn around and see what exactly is the path we can take as a county. I have encouraged people to put in writing, write a letter, and, uh, to their place of business that they would like to provide, uh, money to, and, um, to let them know how uncomfortable they are, because, you know, bottom line in capitalism, it's the, it's the, uh, business's job to woo customers to come in there and convince them that their money is worth, uh, whatever they're exchanging it for goods and services, and, um, so in the interim, until we can go tighter, if necessary, we have to put pressure on these businesses, um, if that's what the customers want, you know? There will be other businesses in any organic environment that will cater to the people that are, don't, don't take that into consideration, so, um, until we can get a direct order, and I'm with you, uh, uh, both Hartung and Burke Bigler, in that, um, it's the dining outside, the outdoor events, all of those things are, are what is probably going to be something we're going to do for the next couple of years, so, although I don't know how much Washoe County has to say with that, about that, but Reno and Sparks could really, transform the way the downtowns look, get the cars out of there, have everything open out on the streets, and, uh, at least for this season, anyway, so brilliant ideas to both of you. I'm just piling on a little bit. And then I want to say goodbye to Bob Harmon, too, and what I would say to staff that are listening and nervous about our economic downturn, Mr. Harmon could teach you a thing or two about the importance of flexibility during an economic crisis, because he was able to very seamlessly and effortlessly go from, uh, parks to the sheriff's department as their public information officer, and I agree with the, uh, Commissioner Hartung. There's probably nobody better in his field, uh, for here locally or more trusted. So I, um, I bid farewell, and I, I beg the staff to look at him as inspiration, and maybe he, before he leaves, he can tell you some tips and tricks in all of the different areas, and, um, I welcome Sarah Johns, uh, she's amazing, she's a local celebrity, and, I will just tell you this, her, her, uh, insides match her pretty outsides, so she's, she's a, a real catch for us, and so welcome on board Sarah Johns as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Assistant County Manager, Solero.
Good morning. Not by way of discussion, but by way of information. A couple of commissioners have some questions out there regarding who to contact for enforcement of some of these business guides. I just want to remind everybody, uh, that Washoe 311, so you simply dial 311, or send an email to washoe311@washoecounty.us. They're going to kill me, they're upstairs right now listening to this, uh, and the flood of calls will start coming in, however, they have all the information necessary with who the appropriate people are for the specific questions. Spoke with them this morning on a couple of those items, so, uh, you know, if there's any question out there, you get any questions from constituents or constituents you want to, uh, citizens you want to give someone a call and ask the question specific, uh, simply dial 311 or send an email to washoe311@washoecounty.us.
Thank you. Assistant County Manager, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and not by way of discussion also, but I, I wanted to chime in and say I totally agree with Commissioner Jung. I think she's right on that we do not want to put our sheriff and our Reno police and our, um, Sparks police in the position of having to enforce masks. I just, I, I've, I've watched some of the, uh, problems in other states, and the last thing we want to do is put our, our frontline people in harm's way with people who really don't want to wear a mask, so I just, I just wanted to say I completely agree with that. My thought would be that we would make grocery stores and pharmacies, um, it's their, they are the ones who should be enforcing it rather than us. Their business is taking care of people, and I, I would think they should be enforcing it. Of course, you always come down to the question of who's going to enforce them to enforce it, and I don't know, I, I don't want, I, like Commissioner Jung, I absolutely do not want to drop this in the lap of our frontline people who have way more important things going on right now to try and fight this virus, so just by way of discussion to add that comment in.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just, I, I have to just say this, um... And I just, I have to just say this. My wife and I were out in the grocery store, shall remain unnamed, even though it's really a great report. And they had everyone lining up out front, distance. And as certain, a certain number of people were going in, you know, a certain number of people going out, rather, they would let a certain number of people going in. They made sure that everyone had masks. It was very respectful in the store. I know not everybody has had this experience, but this was a, this was a model for how things could be run. And it was a delightful experience, actually. It was not stressful in any way, shape, or form. Didn't take us any amount of time to get in the store. I didn't feel like it infringed on any of my rights. I thought it was a very, very good experience. And I can talk to staff offline. It would be improper for me to announce which store it is over another store, because I'm sure that there are many that are practicing these same policies. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung, I appreciate that. I will add my comments now. First, I want to say, as Commissioner John and Commissioner Hartung have both pointed out, Bob Harmon has been a fixture here at Washoe County for many, many years, well before I was on this commission, and has done really some fantastic work and been so dedicated to the county. And for the last years of his career at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, he has been at the front line on some of the most tragic times, but also some of the best times. And he is truly a professional and one of the best here within the community, and does provide that level of professionalism and expertise as it pertains to being a Public Information Officer and providing that information when it's so desperately needed to the community. So, Bob, we wish you the best in your retirement. We hope to see you within the community, often enjoying yourself. But we wish you the best, and thank you so much for dedicating so many of your years of life and your career to Washoe County. Two, testing and the quarantine. I want to make sure, one of my questions and some of the discussions that I have are just the same as all the other questions the community is having. Why are we not moving towards a broad-based testing asymptomatic type of test? And I agree, we as a body and a commission need to advocate for that continuously. Dr. Tony Sloanum at Renown has put forth, he would continue to want, he continues to advocate for, you know, a thousand, 100,000 tests in 100 days to really get down to trying to test 1,000 people here within Reno, Nevada, and Sparks every day for 100 days to really get a good set, data set of our community, about 20% that will allow us to statistically look at what the data and how the virus is truly affecting us. And then, the quarantine issue, we did, you know, Edison Housing was one of the first things that we stood up as quickly as possible to get, and we have yet to utilize that. And I want to make sure that we're doing what we can from the manager's office to move forward with that type of housing. That housing was always built for presumptive positive or positive cases of COVID. And there is a misnomer out there that we cannot use that for that. I know for sure through my discussions with FEMA and through the Homeland Security, that can be and will be compensated by FEMA. So, if there is any kind of discussion in staff, I'd like to have that meeting in my office ASAP to have that kind of rectified and make sure that we are getting that information out to the public as soon as possible. Because if there are people that have a need for housing and can't quarantine properly, we have that availability. We have built that and is ready to stand up and utilize. So, I want to make sure we are doing that. We've heard a lot about skilled nursing facilities throughout our region and the cases that have continued to erupt through those facilities. And yes, it is alarming and challenging. And my heart goes out to those families that have families and loved ones in those facilities and are not able to get close to them and are worried about their health and well-being based upon the ability to test and find out how their quarantine process is going. I want to assure you that the state is working diligently. The Department of Behavioral Health is working with Washoe County Health District, and we are doing everything in our power to work with those businesses to make sure that your loved ones are taken care of and as we continue to test. And if, and one thing I will tell everybody, as we continue to test, we are going to see more positives. We will, it's going to happen. It's how we have a plan in place to address those positives and continue to work through this virus. And what we've seen has been working. Social distancing has been working. Washing your hands, proper sanitation, has been working. We do have cases continuing to erupt, but we need to continue to test to find those individuals and try to work through this. That's the only way we're going to get a good handle on this virus until we have, as Commissioner John pointed out, a vaccine or a very robust treatment for these patients. And we're continuing to see different implications from this virus for children that we never have seen before that are starting to arise throughout the country. So, as we learn more about this virus, we still urge people that, you know, yes, it's inconvenience, yes, it's challenging for businesses. But as we continue to open up and as we've been in Phase 1 now for a little over a week, we are seeing that there is still an air of worry and concern in the community to address prior to just opening up the businesses full bore. So, we want to make sure that people are taken care of. You know, take care of those around you. Wear a mask, not for yourself, but to protect somebody around you. You know, wear a mask to, you know, and we're recommending it, and we're pushing for it. And as the other Commissioners, some grocery stores are doing great, others are not. I know yesterday I went to a grocery store, and there was a lot of people, employees and consumers that were not wearing masks. And it's a challenge, not just here in Washoe County, but across the state. So, it's going to be a big deal. Restaurants continue to see a different type of customer, and I know we're slowly getting back into that. And some restaurants are choosing to wait to reopen, and others are moving ahead. But please be patient. Once again, please be humble with these individuals. This is a new type of business for most individuals out there. They've never had to experience this type of procedure in their business before, so they're learning as well. So, please be humble to everybody out there. Please be cognizant that this is a new normal, that not everything is going to be as smooth as everybody intends it to be, but everybody's trying. There is no playbook for COVID-19. There is no playbook on how to address this. We have Memorial Day coming up. Memorial Day is going to happen this coming Monday on the 25th. It's my six-year-old's birthday. And so, but more importantly, that day is going to be two weeks from when we opened Phase 1, right after Mother's Day, when we'll see how the community reacted, how we've done, and how we're continuing to address the flattening of the curve. The LEAP team has been working diligently, time and time again, to see what we can do to move into Phase 2. We're hoping that the numbers stay positive as we continue to test. I've had a number of conversations with the State Lab and on the DEM calls. Caleb Cage, Chief Cage, has been moved to head up testing and the COVID response in the Governor's Office. So, he's left the Department of Emergency Management and is now directly in the Governor's to head up the task force. He is a wealth of information and has been a strong advocate for those across. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Commissioner Chairwoman, Marilyn Kirkpatrick from Clark County, Chairman J.J. Goikachia from Eureka County, Dagny Stapleton, Terry Reynolds, and Michael Brown, both from GOED and the State Department of Industry, Businesses and Industry, and Betsy Fretwell from SWITCH, for all of their help on the LEAP team. It has been the work that those individuals have done to protect the business interests, whether it's churches, tattoo parlors. These individuals have worked tirelessly, day in and day out, and literally have not taken a break to spend time with their families or do anything else but to address these concerns of many businesses across the states. So, I want to put on the record to make very clear, none, one of these individuals has ever advocated for no business to be open. We have worked tirelessly to make sure that we have policies and protective policies in place for everybody. We have listened to every association out there and worked with every association. But we are still working with the Governor, and it's really ultimately the Governor's decision and his medical advisory team to make those decisions. And we are going to work with him to try to make sure that this is a safe Nevada going forward. But that is, those decisions lie within his hands and his advisors. We're just merely trying to provide his teams with the information from our counties. So, but people are becoming, people are becoming very innovative. I was told down in Las Vegas that a, you know, team, groups of people that are doing outside yoga, they're trying to stay healthy and not, you know, and separate and do six feet to social distancing and trying to maintain their health. I think as people are trying to move forward and do find ways to be innovative and creative as we move into the next phases, I hope we can move into Phase 1 towards the end of this month, right after Memorial Day. And we will see if that is really the case. But it's all going to be dependent on how well this community continues to respond. And we are pleading with you, we're asking you to do these types of things. We will, you know, I agree with my Commissioners, it's tough to mandate certain requirements, maybe for businesses, but not for average general public to wear masks and whatnot. But I am pleading with you to do it. For every individual that sits on this dais, for every individual that has a family member out there, for every, just this community as a whole, please take care of each other. And if you feel that you can't or don't want to go out, please don't. And if you're going to go out, be safe and be cognizant of those around you. So, with that, I will go one last time. Commissioner John, do you have something?
Well, I think that the most important thing that we can do is be consistent with our message. And, you know, modeling is the most effective form of changing behavior. So, to model that behavior is also important to people who may look up to you. But most importantly, I think, you know, Mr. Chairman, you probably got the best education of how the state works and all the private industry and special interests onto how we can manage this. But I'm with you, I think we have to watch the data. And I think what's probably so different for us as a state than any other state in the Union is that we rely so much on tourism that we also have to demonstrate to our tourists that when they come here, we won't send them home sick, because that'll kill us way worse than being shut down for a couple of months. Because this is a, you know, it's a, I mean, not so much northern Nevada, but you know, our economic driver and our engine is in Clark County, and that's where our majority population is. So, I understand that, you know, that we are so different, and then we're so different within our state. But I can't thank you enough for doing that. And I want to let the Board know, too. I've reached out to the chairperson whenever anybody calls me from a special interest group, and I ask him, you want me to dig deep, or is this one taken care of? And he's been directing me where he needs me. So, but that's me being proactive asking him, by the way. Because I know sometimes, and I am very much this way, it takes longer to explain to somebody and get them up to speed to help you than just doing it yourself. So, I, Mr. Chairman, thank you so very much. And I just hope that everybody here takes good care of themselves. And if you still have the bandwidth when you've taken good care of yourself, take care of somebody else, that's the best we can do. And that's what we've always done. We're, we are good patriots, we're good citizens. And this is a community that I, I'm telling you, this is the rock and roll community, because we face these type of issues, but we always come back stronger and better. And that has a lot to do with a state that has a lot more leeway than other more restricted neighbors to our west. And that's why the innovation and entrepreneurship is interesting and heartwarming to watch. Balanced with, we all know people are suffering, and people's personal budget are far worse than the county budget. Let's keep that in mind. So, I think we're doing great. I think we have a great team, and I trust our staff and I trust our Chair and Vice Chair to get us through this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner John. And so, what I would ask, Mr. Soloro, for next Tuesday's meeting, I want to make sure that we have, and I know we have Agenda Review this afternoon, but I do want to make sure that we have an agenda item to discuss our continued COVID response in regards to, you know, maybe some enforcement discussion that I know has been on the books for quite some time. Also, I want to have the discussion about how we are doing testing and that. So, for all the Commissioners, it sounds very much as a part for a discussion, so I'd like to have that on the next agenda next week, especially being that it'd be immediately after Memorial Day and right before potentially Phase 2, moving into Phase 2. So, I'd like to have that on the agenda. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, you kicked off something that I had thought about and then forgot to write down, is the concern about Memorial Day and campers. We are right next door to a very large state that has not opened its parks up. The Forest Service have not opened their campgrounds up. And so, we have our campgrounds closed based on the Governor's last ruling. But that is not stopping people from coming here. Interestingly enough, Truckee is now in Phase 2, so they are starting to open up more things. But there's no place for people to stay, so they're coming over into this community. And I think we're going to, it's a thing that worries me about fires this Memorial Day weekend, because I think, because all of the campgrounds are closed, you're going to see people camping places they shouldn't be camping. And I think that's a grave concern. So, I think it becomes extremely incumbent upon us to really keep a close eye on what is happening as people come in. As you know, I represent Incline Village, and Incline Village is being inundated already, totally inundated. People are, the state of Nevada has closed some of the parking lots that go into Sand Harbor and some of the other areas. And so, as a result, people are parking in the neighborhoods all over Incline Village already. I can't imagine how bad it's going to be for Memorial Day, because it looks like the weather's going to be pretty nice. So, I know I am concerned about not just Incline Village and the problems up there, but I'm also concerned about fire danger and some of the other dangers that we're going to see, because the people are in fact getting mixed messages. They're getting the message that, gee, it's beautiful, and Truckee's at Phase 2, so that means I must be able to go out and do what I want to do, and yet they can't camp or they can't, because the campgrounds are all closed. So, I just, I just think it's one of those things that really concerns me a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to make everyone aware there is a test now for antibodies and all that. And go to your doctor and get orders for LabCorp or wherever. So, easy deal.
Yep. And Commissioner Herman's right, there are two tests. There are the PCR test, which is a point-in-time test that'll tell you if you have the virus currently at that time that is available, that we are utilizing here at Washoe County through the Health District. But there is also an antibody test, an IgG and an IgH test that can be ordered by your practitioner. And you can get that test done at LabCorp and Quest and some of the commercial labs around town. And those results will be sent to you so that you can identify that. But for some more information, one thing I wanted to add, too, for some more information for the businesses, there is some confusion for the consumers out there and the businesses. Remember, we have on our website at Washoe COVID, no, COVID-19 Washoe? My back, I always get it backwards, COVID-19 Washoe, right? At covid19washoe.com, if you go down after the dashboard, there is a button that says that it's businesses, it's a link to our business link. It is the guidelines that we rolled out a week ago Friday to provide with everybody the information about what recommendations for businesses, but also is good information for the public. So, if you can find all that information there, it talks about restaurants, it talks about grocery stores. grocery stores, it talks about retail. So those businesses are clearly outlined and those discussions are available on that community guideline from Washoe County. And so just a reminder to go to covid19washoe.com to receive that, that information. It's readily available for you, you can print it off or read it right there on the website. So with that, Commissioner Hartung, you had one last thing about phase two?
Not so much about phase two, Mr. Chairman. It, it dawned on me that I did want to mention, we're seeing low numbers of people going into the emergency rooms and getting treatment when they, they should. They're saving things off and holding things off until they're critical. And I want to remind people that there's plenty of capacity in the emergency rooms. If you're, if you're suffering any type of a, a medical scenario that you need to call 911, call 911 regardless. It's extremely important. Don't put it off. Don't think that, that you're going to get COVID by going into the emergency room. I had a person tell me that, that they were uncomfortable with potentially going into the ER because they thought that they might get infected with COVID, which is really not true at all. In fact, it's probably one of the safest places you could possibly be. So please, 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 if you, if you are suffering a medical emergency, call 911. Do not think that, that the system cannot handle you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further comments by any commissioners, and Mr. Solero, we will close. Item four, and Mr. Manager, we are on to item five.
Mr. Chair, item number five is an appearance and presentation by Washoe County Sheriff Darren Balem concerning the 1990 agreement for dispatch and forensic services between the City of Reno Police Department and Washoe County Sheriff's Office and a crime lab fee study previously presented to the board.
All right. And I believe we have today, joining us is Sheriff Balem, is on Zoom with us. Sheriff, do you have us?
I have you. Do you have me?
I do. We hear you loud and clear, sir.
Mr. Chair, did you want this timed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we can see you, Mr., we can see Sheriff Balem, we can see all your staff there. Good morning, everybody. We've got Under Sheriff Yarborough with you, looks like you've got Chief Deputy Clark, we've got a number of, gosh, it seems like everybody, so I'll let you introduce.
And Chief Deputy Herrera with us.
You can introduce everybody in the room, and the floor is yours, sir.
All right, perfect. So good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners and Assistant County Manager Solero. First, before I introduce my staff, a couple of things I want to say. One, thank you Commissioners for acknowledging Bob Harmon. He is listening in his office today. He was a critical part of our team, my team, and our Sheriff's Office family, and we will absolutely miss him here. His official day is this Friday, but this will be his last county commission. One other thing of highlight before I get to the presentation, a quick update on our positive test from last week on our employee. As you know, that was our fifth. The first four of our employees have all recovered and returned to work. Our fifth one, we tested eight employees and the one inmate he was around. We got all those test results back as of yesterday. All of them are negative, so we just have the one employee who has the positive test. He'll be out for, he'll be tested midweek this week, is doing well in his recovery, so we look forward to hopefully having our fifth person back by sometime next week. So with that, I'll jump right into the presentation. So I have Chief Deputy Jeff Clark, Under Sheriff Wayne Yarborough, Chief Deputy Tim O'Connor's in the back, making sure we're distance, Val Moser, Mary Sarah, Chief Deputy Greg Herrera, Carrie Hewitt, and Stephanie, so all from the crime lab. So with that, I'll jump right in, I'm going to share my screen here.
Great. Perfect, we can see that. Thank you, sir. Marvelous, you're on your title screen, sir. Go ahead.
Hey, so with the crime lab study, so over the last five years, the Washoe County Sheriff's Office and County Manager's Office, as you know, have been working together to address the disparity of services between Washoe County Crime Lab and the Reno Dispatch Memorandum of Understanding, I'll be calling it MOU moving forward. During that time, we've utilized consults from IXP, Fiscal Choice, and consulting with Russ Branson most recently. The most recent dispatch study turned into a crime lab fee study, which County Manager's Office presented to you last week. These studies have been in response to the MOU that was entered into by the Washoe County Commission and the City Council members in 1990 with no ending date. The MOU outlined an exchange of services between the Reno Dispatch and the Washoe County Crime Lab. And as you know, as technology in the forensic services area has grown in advance at the Sheriff's Office, the County Commission and Sheriff's Office has recognized that growing financial gap between services provided and services rendered. So with that, I'll jump into the eight recommendations that came out of Mr. Branson's study. The first, eliminate the subsidy of Reno services. I support the recommendation by Mr. Branson and would support the Washoe County Commissioner in addressing the disparate contract with the City of Reno. Additionally, I support the fair and equal pay for services rendered between the two agencies currently utilizing those services. As you know, the last four sheriffs have been working with the commission to address this disparity of services dating back to the early 2000s. As soon as I became sheriff in 2019, I reached out to the Reno Police Department to discuss the disparity with then County Manager John Slaughter and City Manager Saber Newty and then Chief Jason Soto about the value of dispatch services compared to the value of the forensic services rendered. At that time, Reno indicated that they wanted to move their dispatch center to their new police station. And so with that, we began moving forward to make sure within our dispatch center, we were able to handle what calls for service, i.e. 911 calls that Reno's handling right now, and moving forward so that the commission could address that disparity. Number two, they eliminate the subsidy of Spark service. Again, in 2019, when I entered office, I met with the Sparks Police Department, then the previous chief and incoming chief crawl advised them that for the upcoming fiscal year 2021, the bill would reflect their full cost of services rendered. We are awaiting a response from the City of Sparks on a signed contract for this upcoming fiscal year that will be for their full cost of the lab. Number three, the reduce of county subsidy of non-contract agencies. Again, we've already done this in the fiscal year 21 coming up. We eliminated the non-contract agency, which was option C. So in previous years, we had three options, A, B, and C for those agencies using the crime lab. We got rid of option C, and that was a non-contract, that was like an à la carte. So if they chose option C, it was pay as you go. So we eliminated that in the upcoming fiscal year. So now agencies utilizing the crime lab only have option A or B. Reduce the subsidy of options B agencies. So the Sheriff's Office, again, I support this recommendation, and we've been taking steps over the last decade to become more efficient at a lower cost by transitioning to all civilian staff in the crime lab. We used to have some commission staff that were doing FIS. It's now all civilianized, as well as becoming more efficient in utilizing modern technology. That transition to civilian staff was completed in 2018, which has allowed us to reduce the subsidy of option B agencies. Number five, capture full cost of services. As a result of the current practices, we are capturing most of the departmental and countywide overhead to include IT and purchasing. If in the future, we could add a dedicated IT specialist for all of the technology that's utilized in the crime lab as well as a buyer for the Sheriff's Office budget, that would free up our lab personnel that are currently doing that, which we would then support adding the remainder of that countywide overhead into that cost. We also agree with the recommendation to capture the capital replacement costs. We placed a current CIP for the upcoming year because over the next five years, we have technology and equipment in there of a cost of 1.8 million that's going to need to be replaced. So putting that into a restricted fund so that as we add that into the contracts, we can move that funding so if grants ever dried up, and we then wouldn't be fully relying upon grants if they did to replace our equipment, we'd have that access to replace those moving forward. Shift the cost of FIS services to the FIS service users only. Again, this one, we have option A, which is basically you get the entire crime lab and FIS. Option B is the same thing, where you get just the crime lab, no FIS. If we were to track all FIS services out of either A or B option, that is an extremely labor intensive and it would basically nullify what cost we would be tracking. So basically, that's why we went to the A, B versions of the contracts moving forward. So that those agencies that want to use FIS, they pick option A. Those that don't and just want to use crime lab services, and they will process their scenes, use option B. Reduce the subsidy of the state contract. So with the state, over the last several contracts, they like signing a three-year contract. So what we do, this is our last year of a three-year contract, we will look back at the previous three years, look at that percentage of increase over each year of those three, and then we will average that out for the future next three contracts. So basically, it all averages out when you're looking over a three-year contract. So although Mr. Branson looked at just his previous year, if you looked at the previous two years before that, year one and year two of the three-year contract, those years equaled out this year. So again, we take that into consideration and we add a percentage up. So in the next three-year contract with the state, we will add that into the future three-year contract. And again, with the overall recommendations, number eight, and Mr. Branson's report, you can see there in examples, when we started this back in 1990, in the upper left is the microscope used for firearms. We had five people in the crime lab. At your lower left, we now have well over 37 people assigned to the crime lab. And on the right is our new firearms exam. And the cost of those two equipments is drastically night and day, same with the cost of the labor that went into the crime lab. So again, that's where we have seen that financial gap grow, and the commission has recognized this as well. With the expanded data collection to identify high-cost services and users, again, we just went to, and the crime lab has software, it's called the LIMS Laboratory Information Management System, that tracks all of our high users and our high cost areas. So we already have that information or technology in place to track that. And as far as excluding agencies with no historical contracts and fees, basically how we do this, if we have a one-off where an outside agency that doesn't enter into a contract calls in and requests our services, we send them a bill for that one year, we leave them in so that equates for the next three years. And after three years, if they haven't used us, they get pushed off. So as again, we're figuring out every year, those costs for those agencies that are going to use our crime lab, those that haven't used us over a three-year period are removed, so it keeps the numbers in line. With that, you know, again, I know that was quick, but on the eight recommendations with Mr. Branson, we've met with the County Manager and Mr. Branson, and we agree with most of the recommendations, some of them, like you said, we already implemented for this next fiscal year, which starts July 1, because we recognize those, and this has been an ongoing thing. And as the commission knows, this has been a priority for the Sheriff's Office for many, many years, and the commission. And so I move with Mr. Branson's recommendation and would support the commission in addressing this with the City of Reno.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Chief, I mean, Sheriff Balem, we appreciate that. Let me go to the board really quick for any questions for the sheriff. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have a question, I just have a bravo, let's move forward. It is time that we took a handle on this and stopped subsidizing everybody else for services that are provided by the county. So I am totally supportive of this concept.
Okay. Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, is there?
Oh.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Hartung.
Okay. Sheriff Balem, is there, is there any option or opportunity to investigate how the crime lab could be an enterprise fund and what it would take to do that so that, that basically all of the funding required and everything that it takes to run it could be self-sufficient?
Sheriff, do you want to?
Commissioner Hartung, absolutely. We've looked at that as well as with the non-capital or the capital equipment, putting that into a restricted fund, we could do that. You know, again, our concern, just like the commission's concern is, is the crime lab is a very expensive but much-needed division. And so as long as we make sure that money is there so that we could use that for the crime lab and all of the services rendered, that would be critical. And that's why when we did for the equipment, putting in a restricted fund so that in the event, across the nation, crime labs throughout the nation, they rely on budgets, but, or sorry, grants. But again, we don't want to always say grants are going to be there because we know, especially during these type of situations, those grants start to dry up. So if we were able to put that money and the funding for the lab into either restricted account or enterprise account, that would be agreed upon.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate that. And I, this is, this is in no way a comment to reduce service. It's just a pay-for-service. This is a, this is a business, and it's a much-needed business. It's an absolute necessity. So I, I would not want to impair the crime lab's ability to serve its function, but if there's a way that we can sort of get it to the point where, where it's enterprise and you basically pay for the services that you get, and you just run it like a, like any other business. And, and, you know, then, then really, you know, you can look at how expansions can be dealt with with respect to future technologies. If, you know, again, if it's, if it's run like a business and you go out and you get clients. So that, it's just a, it's just a thought, but my, right now, I really appreciate the hard work in trying to get us to a point where we're net zero. And this is not an easy conversation to have, but thank you for engaging. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Jung, you did have questions previously. Do you have any questions for the sheriff?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned these three-year contracts, like with the state. Do they prepay those contracts or they get trued up and then they pay us after the fact?
They pay that amount annually, so every year, they'll pay that annually. So throughout the three years, each year, they'll pay it.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. Mr. Sheriff or your subject matter expert, can you tell me, and not today probably, can you just send us an email or tell us in a strategy session, attorney-client or labor, what's the positives to having a centralized crime lab and what are the negatives to having a centralized crime lab? Because I know with any choice you take, there's positive and negative. And I know from the history, they talked about the positives, that's why it was important to do it. And of course, the very sophisticated expertise that you need to do that. I mean, these are PhD-level scientists. So can you give us that? And then I, you were talking about a restricted fund in that if it goes up, they pay in. And just a little caveat to you, because we did this with health when we reviewed all of the, how much we're charging people for different types of performance that staff does. You also have to put in there, and they will go down with the cost, if the technology exceeds how much it's costing us to do today, because you do have to do that. So I just, I just wanted to give, because that will come up with people. And then my final thing, obviously, we need an attorney-client meeting for this because everybody is tap dancing around the real issue, which is what are our legal abilities? What's the political will to do this? And most importantly, this is a contractual issue that we have with them. And I don't need to, please don't give me a summary right now of it, I've heard it for almost 13 years now. But that's where we need to get our heads together and talk about strategy and maybe hire outside advice for people that have done this and have a lot of experience with that. And then my final, to go to the enterprise fund, maybe we could cancel all of this, you know, negotiation about what is fair and square. If you, could we or have we thought about, and I'm happy to help you with this. If you, could we or have we thought about, and I'm happy to help you with this, behind the scenes or right in front, whatever you need, have we thought of approaching Tesla, Apple, those, NV Energy? I just wrote down some things that came to my mind that affect everybody in northern Nevada, that could be your, the beginning of that enterprise fund that stabilizes it, have some naming rights, we don't care if it's the Tesla crime lab, but, you know, I go after Tesla in this position because they, I don't know if you've seen their stock recently and their production, they never really stop. They didn't lose any money at all during all this. So in my mind, they owe us the money for being here because of, you know, the giveaways we get, did, and we can argue about whether that was good or bad policy, doesn't matter, it's what we have today. But to get some of these people on board, waste management is another one that I came up with, to get them to either shame them into giving us money, to seeing what this issue really is, or to give them the naming rights, people love that. So, Mr. Sheriff, I'm just spitballing right now. I just, you know, I like to have more than one Plan A, especially if it's the same Plan A we've been talking about, at least for my 13 years. And too many studies have been done on this. I think we know where we all stand on it. It's just we're in that dicey area of contract enforcement or a good contract lawyer that could get us out of that. But I think at the same time, in the backend, let's look for some creative solutions that takes everybody off the hook. Because then, Mr. Sheriff, if you have that funded, that takes some money off of us as a general fund to do other things too that are, and I can argue for you anything that's public safety related, because I've been through this before. So just some ideas and just some, you know, sense of where we should move now, rather than getting reports, getting studies, we say it's not fair, and then it just goes away. And, you know, we do have new players in town. And this might be the time strategically to approach again with a different group for anything that we're trying to renegotiate. But I just want to have more than one path to get to exactly where it is, where we are. And Mr. Sheriff, I know you're bringing online a new PIO. And, you know, I think one thing that we haven't done a good job as a county as a whole in terms of highlighting exactly who these county workers are. I mean, your crime lab would blow the doors off people here. UNR calls itself a tier-one institution. I don't know what that makes your crime lab. Are you a universal ultimate tier of all academics allowed in the world? So I think we need to do more public outreach and engagement of how much what we have and what our employees do across the board of the county, but specifically to this, let's do some highlights about the crime lab. Let's talk about who these, I mean, seriously, these are the brainiacs of our community. And granted, we pay them well, but we can't do anything without them. So I think this needs to have a lot of different paths to get to the same place. And I'm, that's all I'm going to say, because I don't want to release any more of our strategy. That's why I wanted this to be an attorney-client. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right, seeing no further discussion, I'm going to open up for public comment. We did receive an email from Mr. Jeff Church. So Madam Clerk, if you'll read that into the record before we move forward.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. This is an email from Jeffrey Church for public comment, May 19th, Crime Lab 5. Enough said. These sample emails dating back to 2014 speak volumes on the county's need to act or accept the present situation. Stop procrastinating. Make a decision. Washoe cannot afford to subsidize Reno any longer. Jeff Church. And then he's set forth some emails over the years. The first is from Marsha Burke Bigler, dated September 3, 2014, caption, "Save Mount Rose Corridor." Reno owes for crime lab work, 8 million, not 1.2? Question mark? Hi, Jeff. Thanks for your email and concerns about the crime lab bill owed by Reno. It is of serious concern to the commissioners. We are looking at ways to assure the back money is collected and paid to the county. As you know, Reno has a serious financial problem, so doing, so finding a way to collect this back due amount is difficult. Marsha Burke Bigler, Washoe County Commissioner, District 1. The next is an email from Commissioner Jeanne Herman, dated April 27, 2016, to Mr. Church, referencing crime lab and Reno's free ride. Did you watch to the end of the meeting? And a little bit later or earlier in the evening, Mr. Church wrote, "Are we ever going to get this resolved? Any plans to stop subsidizing Reno Sheriff's Office? The tentative budget includes funding for the Washoe County Sheriff's Crime Lab." And then there is an email from Mr. Church to David Humke, dated September 25, 2014. Any update on the free services to Reno by the crime lab on any agenda? And then an email from Mr. Church to Chuck Allen, dated November 6, 2014. Subject Reno Free Crime Lab. Hope you deal with Reno getting free 1.2 million yearly crime lab services and owing 8 million past due. Reno Finance, Robert Chisel. And then he's forwarded something, I'm not sure the orders this says, this is dated August 30, 2014. What Reno owes for crime lab work, 8 million? Is this true? Question mark? Jeff Church, Reno Tax Revolt. That concludes his comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we'll go back and I'll bring it back to the board, seeing no further public comment from staff. This is up for direction, this is for possible action. And so what I would say, if there are no further comments from any of the commissioners, you know, this is, we want to make sure that we keep focused, that this is direction to staff in regards to that 1990 MOU agreement with the city of Reno and City Sparks on whether we want to renegotiate or work on a potential new agreement and what that would look like. You know, if, for any other extraneous discussions about that, we'll have to bring that back for a different agenda item at a later time and date if it were to seek different types of fees or what that would look like. But right now, just direction on whether or not to move forward with, working on renegotiating that contract or working on a new agreement. So I'd be open to looking for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Madam Vice Chair.
So do you want that in the form of a motion that we offer direction to the sheriff and to administration staff to move forward?
Yeah, it is in the possible, it is for possible action. So I would put it in the form of a motion.
I would put that in the form of a motion that we direct the sheriff and his staff and our county management staff to move forward at looking at that agreement and deciding, do we need to terminate it immediately or do we want to renegotiate it, whatever the idea is, but, and then have them bring that back to us. That would be my motion.
Okay. I have a motion. I have a motion from Madam Vice Chair. I have a second from Commissioner Herman. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Jung, voting in the affirmative via telephone. All right, Mr. Manager, we're on to item six. This is an appearance and presentation by the Washoe County Sheriff. This is for discussion only, sir.
That is correct. Item number six is an appearance and presentation by Washoe County Sheriff Darren Baylam on COVID-19 conditions within the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Detention Facility, and this is indeed for discussion only.
Okay. So we have, Mr. Sheriff, we have you back. How are you? There you are. We see you. We see you again. So we have the sheriff joining us now, and we have also Chief Deputy Jeff Clark. He was sitting there in front of us, we've lost you, but are you there with us still? Can you hear us?
I am, sir. And so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Deputy Clark, who's over the detention facility, and he will present our update to the commission on our detention facility as well as some of our COVID stuff we've been doing.
Great, thank you, Chief, Sheriff.
Can you see the slides, Chair?
Not yet.
Okay, hold on. Let us hit share.
We, yeah, we have them on our computer, but there, that's perfect. We can start seeing here. There you go. Now we've got them, Sheriff.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. First off, I want to thank the county manager and assistant managers and the commission for your leadership during these trying times. I'm going to start off the presentation with just our 2019 report. As you know, this got delayed several months ago because of COVID, and so I just wanted to go over these statistics as are mandated by statute. So 2019, we also sent a report in the SOSO to county management and commission. This was Sheriff Baylam's first year as our elected sheriff, and we saw a reduction of our average daily population of 1,086. This is a 4.40 decrease from 2018. The average length of stay was 15 days and it was relatively flat from 2018, and we've seen very little movement of that over the last several years. Another interesting fact is our annual bookings, those were down just over 5% from 2018 at As you're well aware, Sheriff, one of Sheriff Baylam's biggest focuses last year was increasing programs, the inmate services, to enhance that continuity of care and really provide additional outside resources and inside resources for those inmates in an attempt to reduce recidivism and our daily population. As a result, we established the detention services unit. We also established a medication-assisted treatment within our facility. That focus was providing support and services to the inmate population, again, to reduce recidivism and overall community crime. Last year, over 440 inmates were transported to treatment programs. That was a cost savings on the daily incarceration of over $4 million. 2019, we saw four in custody deaths. On January 10, 2019, Mr. Morris Reed, his cause of death was suicide by asphyxiation. On April 12, 2019, Mr. Dennis Og, his cause of death was suicide by asphyxiation. On April 12, 2019, Mr. Chad Recob, his was a, cause of death was a suicide due to blunt force trauma. He jumped off one of the tiers in our facility. And then on April 20, 2019, Mr. Brian Wilber succumbed to some internal GI issues, natural causes. It's important to understand with, as all of you would agree, and certainly Sheriff Baylam's number-one goal or understanding is that any death within our facility is not acceptable. And we have worked hard, including last year, on, with Navcare, of hiring a full-time psych RN to be added to our mental health unit. So we do have a full-time psychiatrist now, a full-time psych RN, and three licensed clinical social workers. We were also successful last year in applying for and being awarded two grant-funded positions, one licensed clinical social worker to be assigned to our detention services unit and an additional discharge planner. We increased the training and awareness of mental health and suicide, not only with our staff, but with our inmate population as well. We increased phone and email monitoring. We feel that it's extremely important to monitor these things and look for key words, and we are using a technology to assist us with that. We also created, as you know, Sheriff Baylam started sending you a suicide report that monitors monthly averted suicides, attempted suicides, and completed suicides. This report is pretty in-depth and it focuses on the shift and the team and the, where these averted or attempted suicides are happening, so we are fully aware. This is something that, our goal is to have zero in custody deaths. We understand, looking at national statistics of corrections, is that sometimes facilities have a hard time combating this. Last year alone, we had over 1,497 suicides that we averted. So although we are not proud of this because we did have in custody deaths, I want the commission and the managers to know that we take this extremely serious and we are doing everything we can to reach our goal of zero in custody deaths this year. To date for this year, starting off at January through April, as you can see, our average daily population started in January at 1,058, a little bit lower even than last year's stats, and we currently sit at 796. This is obviously due to COVID, but this is, I really have to give a shout-out to our court administrators, the other agencies locally. When we're dealing with a pandemic that we've dealt with, this takes a community to really try to get ahead of that curve. And so with that, all of the agencies have worked hard to reduce the population, reduce the arrests in our community. And as you've seen from reports, we are not seeing an increase but a decrease in crime within our community. And certainly, we're seeing a decrease in the population of our jail. The average length of stay started off in January, again, very much similar at 15 days. We are experiencing in the month of April, longer stays. We think this is in part due to some of the delayed court proceedings, but we are keeping an eye on this and working with the chief judge and our court administrators. Our bookings, again, in January, started out about 1,600 relatively on average to April, 683. So again, all of the law enforcement within our community has done a phenomenal job at really looking at the arrests that they were making and seeing if they were needed or not. Obviously, we did not close our jail. We took this very serious from the very beginning and took several steps to reduce the COVID within our jail and certainly look out for the safety of our staff and our inmate population. I wanted to highlight a couple things that we've done within our facility and our jail. As many of you know, we have had five staff members from the sheriff's office, not necessarily just in the jail, but within the whole sheriff's office, that have been positive for COVID over the last three months. We have had zero in the jail. You know, I think this is a positive for our facility, and I think in part, it's due to this, what we did very, very early on with listening to the health department recommendations and certainly the CDC recommendations. So some of the things that we did is create a single-point entry into our facility. So not only staff, but anybody that has come into our facility enters through one point. We conduct medical screenings of the guests and our staff. We also do shoe disinfection right at our front doors. We provide inmate, enhanced inmate medical COVID screening for our inmate population, and we're keeping a special eye on our high-risk population that we've identified and, for whatever reason, put them in that high-risk category, whether it be their age or their illness. But we continuously screen that population. We also create an isolation and a quarantine unit. This unit has a HEPA filtration system, and it's really for the protection of our general population. So when an inmate does come in or an inmate becomes ill while they're in the facility, they're moved to this isolation unit so that we can keep an eye on them and take their temperatures and watch as this progresses. Once it meets that criteria for, once it meets that criteria for COVID, then they are tested for COVID and remain in that quarantine unit. Some of the other items that we did at the start of the pandemic was we provided, again, enhanced inmate- was we provided, again, enhanced inmate services because we stopped all visitation and really all of our transports to the courts because we didn't want that increased, the increased possibility of affecting any of our inmates or staff. As a result of that, we were able to work with our contractors and get free emails, phone calls, and I web visits to our inmate population, really to reduce the anxiety. We also, in all of the housing unit, put up signage and talked to them about COVID and what was going on within the community. We also waived the inmate medical assessment fees to ensure that any inmate that was sick or feeling signs and symptoms would feel free to let us know and let our medical staff know what they were feeling so that we could get them quarantined or the help that they needed. We opened up an additional laundry facility in our newest area control floor. And that was really to eliminate the cross-contamination of our workers inmates and our general population inmates. And then finally, we've continued the coordination with court administrators in regards to the hearings and appearances. We created new, two additional video courtrooms. So we now have four here at our facility. And we continue to work with the judges and the court administration on continuing our court appearances. So that's your report for the Washington County Jail. And I'm certainly open to questions that you may have.
Great. Chief Deputy Clark, we appreciate that. I have Commissioner Herman sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that you've got a job that's been very well done. You're successfully running that detention center to way past my expectations. Your report is excellent. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Jung or Commissioner Hartung, do you have any questions for Chief Deputy Clark?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Commissioner Hartung, go ahead.
Thank you. You mentioned, Mr. Clark, about the 440 inmates. Is that a rehab program or was that in Crossroads? Or what was the program that they were diverted into?
That was a mixture, as you're aware, sir, of Crossroads and Northern Nevada Hopes and any place that we could find them treatment for mental health and/or addiction services.
Okay, but you said it saved us about $4 million, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I mean, this is the poster child for why we would want to fund these kinds of programs, commissioners. I mean, there's a direct cost benefit in the detention facility itself, not to mention the overwhelming cost benefit of getting these folks back into society again and, you know, saving their lives, literally. So I would hope that we would look at these kinds of programs when we're looking at our budget as to how they can really benefit the overall budget and not be a drain on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. First of all, Chief Deputy Clark and Sheriff Balaam.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner Jung, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No worries. Yeah, I love what Commissioner Hartung said. And that is something I am going to challenge staff to do, of course, to bring back on another agenda item. The, there's a new calculation out now that's used in industry when we do things like we make people, make auto manufacturers put seatbelts in. And then they had a different number for what a human life was. I mean, you really can find it quantified. So what I want to agree with and support is what Commissioner Hartung said, which is, we know Chief Deputy Clark is probably the walk and talking expert of all facilities that will take any, that have opening beds anywhere in the northern, northwest region of all of the United States. And the issue is, it's hard to find beds for people. And I'm sure his staff spends a lot of time trying to do that. And that savings, I'm talking to the board of commissioners right now. We should be looking at where we can put that with guidance of Chief Deputy Clark to build those up because what we're seeing with also this not detaining people because of our fear of COVID becoming out of control in a jail setting is that cages don't deter people. They never have in this country. You can cage everybody up as soon as you let them out or anybody still outside. They're still doing it. So if people are not inherently dangerous to themselves and others, caging them is, to me, a fail, big fail of our society. And those beds and the opportunity for the human capital that we're investing in and the avoidance of misery is worth something, too. There's got to be a number. We've got to lay a point on that because that's what we do as county commissioners is we are supposed to enhance and improve the quality of life here and not detract and make it worse and spend their money foolishly. So that's one thing I would like to look at, too. And then I want to know from the sheriff, not today, an update or whatever, however he wants to do it, what he is doing, how he's planning for the future with all of this new technology, working from home, specifically in terms of how we're going to continue this. Because transporting is archaic, it's expensive, it's a security risk. And these judges and the sheriff, inasmuch as he can tell a judge to do anything, right, should be insisting this is standard operating procedure from now on. The sheriff should not be responsible when we have, in this day and age of technology and infectious disease, for transporting people to have a face-to-face conversation with the judge. It's archaic, it's expensive, and it is inherently very risky. So, Mr. Sheriff, if you could get that back to us, just an overall, I mean, I know there's way more threads to pull on that and there's things to talk about, but I just want to hear from you, when you get some time and the dust settles, what you're going to continue to do and what you will start reinstating with the goal, always, of trying to create less money being impacted for you to have staff to transport, to do any of your functions. You should be saving money, not expanding money. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. You know, I wanted, Commissioner Jung and I traveled years ago to St. Louis to inspect their jail and see the operations that they've done there. And I agree with Commissioner Jung. Many times, it is the programs after, after they've been incarcerated that provide them the ability to decrease that recidivism. And I think we, as a community, need to continue to look at that. And the other thing, Commissioner Jung brings up a great point. I think this COVID-19 and this pandemic and this closure of our entire country for the last two months or eight weeks is going to be one of those tipping points. It's going to be what I'd like to maybe consider the great accelerator of our community and of our generation. Many times throughout history, you see these types of instances force change. You know, the arrival of computers, arrival of internet, different things of that nation. We're seeing now the ability that not necessarily isn't necessary to be in a physical spot to do some of these court proceedings and how we move forward to different things. And so I would urge that the sheriff's office and the courts continue to look at ways to be highly functional in these upcoming days. And that way, we can save those dollars that we'd be wasting on some type of archaic procedures towards programs that we've seen are beneficial tremendously here in our community. Sober 24 and Crossroads and many others that seem to be working in the right direction. So let's really focus on that rehabilitation versus, and in St. Louis, they did focus on that because they needed to. And I think we need to probably get there well before we need to. So that would be my comment. So I want to thank the sheriff and Chief Deputy Clark for all the work that you guys are doing at the jail. It is very difficult and you do, every time I've come and visited, it's constantly clean and your approach to what you're doing with COVID has been fantastic. So I thank you. So with that, we do have public comment. This is for discussion only. I have a voicemail from Anne Marie Grant. So we will go to that voicemail now.
Commissioner, since we, since this was for discussion only, we took it upon ourselves to put it at Agenda Item 13 for public comment.
Perfect. Okay, we will move that to Agenda Item 13. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going to move on to Item 7. Thank you very much, everybody. Chief, Sheriff's Office, thank you very much for participating today.
Thank you, Chair. And again, real quick, I'd just like to echo, I concur and I put a little chat because it's hard learning this new Zoom, but we've been working with the courts. So we'll continue with technology of how we can reduce those court transportation. So thank you for the opportunity. We'll come back with some more presentations and answers.
Thank you, sir. Have a wonderful day. Be safe up there at the sheriff's office. Thank you. All right. Assistant County Manager Solero, Item 7, this is your item, sir.
It is, Mr. Chair. Item number seven is an appearance and presentation by myself and Eric Crump, Community Services Department Division Director of Operations, for an update on Washington County's COVID-19 operations plan for regional parks from May through August 2020. So with that, I'll go ahead and start. During this time, as Washington County responds and provides service to our citizens, in this instance, specifically our park services, it is important that we provide you and the citizens an update on our operation strategy. I have to let you know that you have the most professional park staff in the region and they have worked tirelessly to comb through CDC guidance, OSHA requirements, and other National Park Association-specific publications related to how to provide services and keep our staff and community safe. As you can imagine and as you have seen with other businesses in the area, the guidance is plentiful and requires measures to ensure cleanliness, sanitation, and separation in our parks. Additionally, requirements from the directives provided through the governor's office define what amenities can be opened during specific phases. And I think more importantly, for part of this discussion, undefined amenities in future phases. So as Mr. Crump provides the update on phases and park amenities opening, it is important to understand that all of the added measures necessary to keep our staff and public safe also take additional time, procedures, and budget. As you are aware, all of those things were in short supply prior to these new restrictions. So I ask that you and the public be patient as we understand, as we work forward through the upcoming months. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Eric Crump, CSD Operations Division Director via Zoom.
Mr. Crump.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, and thank you, Assistant County. Solero, can you hear me?
We can, sir. You're coming in 2020. So go ahead, sir.
Great. I'm going, I have a short presentation. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Can you all see that?
Not yet, sir. I, try again.
Let's try this here.
There you go. Perfect.
So first of all, thank you, thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for providing this opportunity. You know, Washington County park system has continued to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I just wanted to give an overview of kind of where we are and where we think we're going. When this pandemic first hit our area, things were changing almost daily. I'm sure you can all relate. And as Assistant County Manager Solero indicated, throughout this, park staff continued to kind of comb through guidelines, talk to our agency partners, making sure we were being consistent with the City of Sparks and the City of Reno and Carson City so it made it easier for our community. And we were just kind of working on the best information we could get at the time. During the initial response, the Community Services Department, we developed some primary objectives to help guide basically all of our operations, including park operations. As you can see from the slide, the first three bullets really focus on the safety of our employees and the safety of our park users. And that continues to be paramount. It's interesting and I'm sure you can all relate. You know, we quickly realized, based on some of the nice days we had early on in our parks, our parks were booming. And we quickly realized that what we were seeing in our parks and talking with other agencies, that parks were going to play a really critical role in both the, kind of the physical and mental well-being for our community as we navigate through this pandemic. So it was critical that we kept our parks open, but safe. So in order to protect our staff and our community, we closed many of our park facilities, but kept our parks and trails largely available to the public. Park staff continued to work in the field, keeping parks open, trying to educate folks who were there while putting protective measures in place, not only for the public, but for themselves. So, you know, we discontinued the sharing of vehicles. We put wipe-down protocols in for shared equipment. We worked alternative schedules to kind of separate staff. We provided some PPE when it was recommended through OSHA or CDC, along, or on top of all kind of the normal social distancing, staying home when you're sick. Throughout this pandemic, we've been updating our operations plan in response to the governor's orders and CDC guidelines. We've kept that information up to date on our website, nearly real-time or as close to real-time as we could. And with the governor's most recent plan, we've developed kind of a phased approach for how and when Washington County's park system will open back up to our community. We followed that phased approach of the governor. So I wanted to take a few minutes today to talk about those different phases and what the community might expect when they're visiting Washington County parks. So right now, we're in Phase 1. And I think it's important to note that this plan is based on the information as we know it today. If we know anything, it's been changing rapidly. So Phase 1, basically our parks, our trails, our individual picnic areas, restaurants, and trash services are all open and available. Our hard court system, our hard courts, like basketball, pickleball, tennis, disc golf courses, dog parks, skate parks, horse arenas in our archery facility, they're all open. We're really focusing on park amenities that are meant for individual use or, you know, small groups, household members, that type of thing. We also have modified operations at our golf courses. And I'm proud to say that we opened our regional shooting facility this past weekend with a modified operation. It went relatively well. We're operating roughly at 50% capacity. Some of the modified measures that we have there, we're operating every other booth. We are closing the entrance gate during live fire and then bringing in new people during the ceasefire so that we can disinfect each of the shooting tables. Staff are wearing masks when they're interacting with the public and the public is being asked to wear masks when entering the booth to pay. There, I will say, there have been some that are not happy with wearing a face mask entering the booth. We've worked around that. We're able to, to send, we have two people typically working their range, plus some volunteers, and we're able to go around and either get their credit card or their cash so they don't have to go in the booth without a mask. But generally, it's been, it's been good. And obviously, the community has been responsive and happy that that facility is open. Phase 2, what we expect and what we know based on the governor's plan in Phase 2, we'll probably see our park offices open back up with the modified approach. We'll have limited occupancy. We'll have hand sanitizer. Park staff who are interacting with the public and kind of closed spaces will be wearing face masks and the community will be asked to wear a face mask as well. We plan on opening our Davis Creek Campground. I had heard earlier Commissioner Verbigler talk about campgrounds. We were hopeful that camping might open in Phase 1, but the governor's order directly stated that state campgrounds were going to be closed. And the last thing we wanted to be was the only campground open because we know what that would look like. So we're hoping to open our Davis Creek Campground in Phase 2. And then we're going to see things like Bowers Mansion Tours and our contract classes in our community centers opening back up in Phase 2. Phase 3 is really when we should start seeing some larger gatherings and maybe some smaller special events, but there will likely be a modified approach. So in Phase 3, So in Phase 3, we anticipate being able to open our community centers back up. There may be a cap on occupancy based on the square footage of those. We don't know exactly what that looks like, but we will follow whatever directives come out of the Governor's office. We'll see our mini-museum, our visitor center up at Galena, some of our group picnics, athletic field permits, our, the garden rentals at the Wilbur D. May Arboretum, as well as the Robert Z. Hopkins Amphitheater, and maybe some of our smaller special events, or I'm thinking runs or something along those lines. Due to the financial uncertainty and the fluidness of the Governor's plan, we've had to make the difficult decision not to open our three aquatic facilities. The aquatics programs as a whole are not cost-covering, and the shortened season would certainly compound that financial loss. The three facilities that we have are Bowers Mansion Pool, Medio Gas Berry Water Park at Lazy 5, and the North House Splash Park. This was a very difficult decision, and it wasn't, it wasn't solely hinged on the financial uncertainty, but certainly, you know, this is the time where we're getting those facilities open. We're hiring staff, and hiring staff for the unknown future was, was, you know, obviously challenging. So, we're hoping to take some of this time to do some much-needed improvements at the facilities. In fact, out at our Bowers Mansion Pool, it's under construction. We're increasing the size of the deck to include kind of a reservable group area to increase revenue potential there, and that was actually funded through a generous grant from the William and Pennington Foundation. So, with all of that, we have, we have developed a park phasing matrix that will be available on our website, and it basically goes into great detail about all these things I just talked about, and shows what's open, what's not, when we expect it to open, and if there's some type of modified operation. We've continued to provide that information on our website, but this is a matrix where people can get kind of in the details if they have specific questions. And again, it's all contingent on the information we know at this time. And last, I really wanted to thank our park staff. They've been out there. Assistant County Manager Biggs Solero had indicated they've been working tirelessly. They understand the importance parks plays to our community, especially during this time. And so I want to thank them, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crump. I appreciate the presentation. Are there any questions from Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am actually, I have no questions. I, I just am really sorry to hear that the water parks are gonna be closed because we just had a presentation from the weather people who are telling us it's gonna be a hot year. And so I'm afraid they're gonna be lining up in my driveway to get into my swimming pool, so... Because, because it is open, so I know people will be calling me now saying, can I come over? I am worried about that, but I, I realize the situation we're in and that it's probably not something we can do anything about. So I'm sorry to see that, but I'm really glad that you guys are planning ahead for all the other things that we need. We, our parks are gonna be so important this year. And I mean, I think they're important every year, but I think this year you're gonna see even more activities in our parks because people can't do other things that they wanna do. So, good job, good program, and I'm really glad to see that you've got it all together. So we're looking forward to a very interesting summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this may be a little off-topic, Mr. Crump and Mr. Solero, but with respect to Wild Creek, and I know it's still, to my knowledge, it's still closed down. If, if, if anything even goes a little sideways, I'd really like to look at turning that into a regional park. I would still like staff to come back with an option to de-restrict that property into perpetuity. I don't know how we can possibly achieve that. I know, I know legal has been a little... It's, it's, the comments have been a little questionable as to whether we could do that, let me put it that way. But I'd love to see that as a regional park with an equestrian facility. We have no equestrian facilities in, in the, the north here or in Sparks. So I, I think it would just be a, a perfect opportunity. I know that there are trails that lead up into the hills that's BLM territory, and maybe this is the perfect time while we're sort of clamped down with, with the COVID pandemic to look at these kinds of things as we move into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I appreciate that. I also want to thank the park staff. I think they've done a tremendous job maintaining the safety of all the residents here within the community in a very challenging time. I think they've done a great job. It's been very difficult. And as I said earlier, there's no playbook, and, and we're trying to figure this out as we go, and it's very challenging how we interact with the community and protect our community, but make sure they stay safe. With an ever-changing landscape, it's very difficult. So, we will keep everybody posted as the Governor's continues to, we move through the Governor's roadmap to recovery and how the phases will phase back in. I, I too am disappointed that we had to make the difficult decision because this poor pandemic has, has affected everybody differently, from children to businesses to our vulnerable populations, to everyone. And it's just, it's just a difficult thing for everybody involved. But I, I understand the decisions that we make are those to, so that we can go on and, and have these potential parks and, and activities available in coming years. So with that, I will, seeing no further comments from any other Commissioners. Commissioner Jung, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, we will move, we will close and move past this. We are on to Item 8. This is our proclamations for this. And so, being that the, we're gonna read some proclamations, I'm gonna have Commissioner, Mr. Solero, help me with a couple of these, and Commissioners here in the, in the rooms, help me with these. So, Mr. Solero, would you read us 8A, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, Item 8A is proclamation proclaiming May 17th through 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week. So whereas Washoe County Community Services Department is an integral part of the community and has been providing public works to the benefit of the community and residents since June 15th, 1967, and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital, of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the Washoe County; and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments, and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential, essential for our citizens; and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Washoe County to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities; and whereas the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and now therefore, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May 17th, 2020, through May 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week, and urges all, all our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, dated this 19th day of May, 2020, signed by our Chair, Bob Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Solero. I appreciate you. Thank you for reading that in. And I know we have Eric Crump still with us via Zoom to accept that. Mr. Crump, do you have any comments, or would you like to make a comment on that?
Sure. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. You know, normally we'd have a, a, a group of public work professionals that work for Washoe County there to kind of show our thanks in you recognizing this, and I look forward to the day that we can do that again. But in the meantime, thank you for this recognition. It's important. And I can assure you that all those public work professionals that work for Washoe County are, they're doing the best they can.
Great. Thank you. All right. We're on to Item 8B, sir.
Item 8B is to claim May 2020 as International Internal Audit Awareness Month.
All right. I'll take this one. And for the, internal auditing is a very important part of our government services here. It maintains that clear and concise understanding that government work still goes on day-to-day and that we're, we're doing everything the most efficient manner with the tax dollars that we've been entrusted with by the general public. So, with that, whereas internal auditing is an independent, objective assurance and consulting activity designed to add value and improve an organization's operations; whereas internal auditors are explorers, analysts, problem solvers, reporters, and trusted advisors. Today's internal audit professionals are revered for their critical thinking and communication skills and as, as well as industry-specific business knowledge. And whereas professional internal auditors agree to abide by a code of ethics that upholds principles of integrity, objectivity, confidentiality, and competency. They raise red flags when they discover improper conduct. And whereas internal auditors are a, with a solid understanding of the organization's objectives, examine the operations to determine whether they are efficient and effective. And whereas, an internal audit investigate possible fraudulent behavior throughout the organization with access to all records and authority to conduct audits at any level of the organization. And whereas, internal auditors stand as the third line of defense and is nimble with the broadest view of organizational risk. Internal audit is here to help the other lines mitigate risk and to be the last line of defense and catch risks even before it crosses the line to be detected by external assessors. And whereas, internal auditors and supporters across America are celebrating International, International Internal Audit Awareness Month. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2020 as International Internal Audit Awareness Month, and encourage all residents and employees to get to know the vital role of internal audit plays at all times. It's in all days' work for internal auditors around the world, dated this 19th day of May 2020, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chair, Washoe County Commission. And with us, we have our internal auditor, Samantha Pierce.
Hi, y'all. Can you hear me?
We can. Ms. Pierce.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the Commissioners for recognizing the importance of the internal audit function and the independence that you guys afford to this position. As objective reviewers of the processes and data, we can make better decisions and, for the organization. And I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today, even via Zoom, to spread the word about our organization's internal audit function. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Samantha. We appreciate it. And we will get you that proclamation so that you can have that. All right. We are on to Item 8C, and for that, Mr. Managers will read that in, and we'll have Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
All right. Item 8C is to proclaim May 2020 as Older Americans Month.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, obviously, seniors, services and senior citizens are a very important part of our community, and, and we're really happy to know that we have such a powerful, strong senior services division in our Human Services Agency. And so with that, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the Washoe County Human Services Agency Senior Services Division serve more than 5,000 seniors in need of support, resources, and referrals to community-based programs and case management during fiscal year 2019. And whereas the Human Services Agency is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers through its vision to ensure every senior is living and aging well. And whereas the Human Services Agency can help improve the lives of individuals of every age, and one way it does so is by serving more than 2,700 seniors... Oh, 2,700 seniors, more than 400, 430,000 meals a year. That's amazing. And whereas, when COVID-19 outbreak concludes and health officials say it is safe to do so, the Human Services Agency promotes the importance of taking care, taking part in activities of, in avoiding isolation and encouraging the elderly to enjoy an active and healthy lifestyle. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2020 as Older Americans Month. The Human Services Agency asks the community to take a moment to appreciate and recognize our Washoe County seniors, dated this 19th day of May 2020, and signed by our Chair, Bob Lucy. And do we have someone?
We do. Madam Vice Chair, we have Steve McBride, our HSA, Human Services, Senior Services Director, with us here to accept the proclamation. So, Mr. McBride, are you with us on Zoom?
Yes, I can. I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Great. Thank you, sir.
Okay, great. Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman, for, for this proclamation. You know, May, every May, we celebrate Older Americans Month, and it's usually a very active month for seniors. This, this year COVID has changed all of that, obviously. And we've asked our seniors to, to do something quite the opposite of, of previous years, which is rather than get out and get involved, is to be involved but stay distant. And the social distancing is, is something that obviously is very important for everyone, but most particularly for our vulnerable populations and our seniors. But they also have a, a lot of contributions year-round, but we celebrate with a theme, and this year's theme is "Make Your Mark." And we've seen a lot of seniors making their mark in a lot of different creative ways over this, over this pandemic, from checking on fellow seniors to see if they're well or have needs, making donations of food or other household items, or just doing their part by combating the virus by staying home. And so although we look forward to better days ahead when we can, you know, re, restart our programs with socialization, at the same time, we've still managed to enroll an additional 450 home-delivered meal participants, and we've continued to serve to-go meals at all of our congregate sites, and also implemented a grocery delivery program for those who need a little assistance there as well. So, there's a lot of creative ways that we're serving seniors, and seniors are supporting one another at this time. So again, thank you for recognizing seniors of Washoe County, and it's my pleasure to accept the proclamation on their behalf.
Thank you, Mr. McBride, and thank you for all the work that you do at the Human Services Agency, working with our, one of our most vulnerable populations, but still one of the most, most important for us. So, thank you for that. All right. We're on to Item 8D. This is the Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month. And with that, I will read this proclamation. I know we have joining us with, hopefully via Zoom, Trucking Meadows Fire Protection District Chief, Chief Moore. We also have Northlake Tahoe Fire Protection District Chief Ryan Summers joining us, and Tahoe Douglas Fire Chief Scott Baker as well. So with that, I'll read the proclamation. And as we've spoken earlier in our Fire Board, as we move into wildfire season, we can't tell you how important it is to be wildfire-aware with the type of activities many of our Nevadans love to do, is get outdoors. It can be very impactful, but these are, this is that month to really pay attention to those types of activities and what you can do to help prevent wildfire. So, our proclamation reads, whereas wildfires significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being; and whereas residents of Nevada fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fired, fire-hazard areas; and whereas residents must be encouraged to move from the expectation of being protected from wildfire to understanding that they must be prepared to survive wildfire; and whereas residents that implement appropriate pre-fire activities improve the survivability of their homes during wildfire; and whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist, to resist ignition. And now therefore, be it proclaimed as, that the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners supports the month of May 2020 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month, and this year's theme would be "Wildfire Knows No Boundaries. Please Make Yours." As it means for education and a call of residents in Washoe County to act now to reduce wildfire threat and prepare for wildfire. This is Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month, dated this 19th day of May 2020. This is Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month, dated this 19th day of May 2020, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chair, Washoe County Commission. Chief Moore, Chief Summers, and Chief Baker, or do we have you on the phone?
This is Chief Moore, I'm here.
Okay, Chief Moore, please, if you'd like to share some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This protection of homes against wildfires truly a partnership. I think the third whereas is very, very profound, that residents must be encouraged to move away from the expectation of being protected from wildfire and moving to the standpoint where they have to take action themselves. It's a failed strategy to think that we're always going to respond, fire trucks take care of the problem, and everything's going to be okay. So this truly is one of those things we call public-private partnerships. This is really an issue where we all need to do our part with respect to protecting ourselves from wildfire. And I just want to say that we're very, very thankful in Northern Nevada to have a robust mutual aid system, a great partnership with UNR, and so we couldn't be better prepared. Again, encouraging citizens to take those preparedness actions themselves really does go the extra mile and enhances our safety a lot more than not doing that, of course. So thank you very much for the proclamation.
Great. Do we have Chief Summers? Chief Summers?
Good afternoon, Ryan Summers. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, hi Ryan, how are you?
I'm doing good. I'd sure like to echo everything that Chief Moore said and appreciate the proclamation and including North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District. And as always, any and all education we can do to avoid wildfire will be better, not only this year with everything going on, but every year from here on out. So do appreciate it and thank you, and thank you for your time on this.
Great, thank you. All right.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jamie Royce-Gomes. I am the manager at University of Nevada Reno Extensions Living with Fire Program. Would it be okay if I talk as well?
Absolutely, Jamie. Thank you for joining in. I just don't have you up on my digital screen in front of me. I apologize, but go ahead, please. Love to hear from you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, we really appreciate you proclaiming the month of May as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month. Now, wildfire can threaten Nevadaan communities and impact homes, property, and human life. The key to minimizing the wildfire impact in Nevada is proactive communities that take steps to prepare. In response, representatives of Nevada's local, state, and federal firefighting agencies, wildfire-prone communities, and University of Nevada Reno Extension have conducted a wildfire awareness campaign every May since 2006. This year, our message is wildfire knows no boundaries, make yours. Now, due to COVID-19, it is important now more than ever to prepare for wildfire and reduce the threat of wildfire. While folks aren't home, there is no better time than right now to create defensible space. So I'm going to talk about some general tips on how to create defensible space around your home. First, keep the first five feet away from your home free of combustible materials such as wood, mulch, dried leaves, pine needles, and flammable shrubs such as sagebrush and juniper. Instead, we recommend planting flowers, succulents, irrigated lawn, or ground cover, or using rock, concrete, brick, or pavers. We encourage residents to remove dead vegetation such as dead trees and shrubs, dried grass and flowers, dead branches, fallen leaves. Within the five to 30-feet zone from your home, we like to keep this area as referred to as the lean, clean, and green zone with irrigated grass, short deciduous trees and shrubs, and herbaceous plants. Beyond 30-feet, we recommend removing native shrubs to provide a separation between shrubs of approximately twice the height of the shrubs. For example, if your shrub is two feet tall, multiply that by two, and then ensure that there's a four-foot spacing between the shrubs. We also recommend fanning mature native trees to provide a separation of at least 10-feet between the tree crowns. During the month of May and all year long, we encourage our community to prepare for wildfire. Folks can learn more about preparing for wildfire at livingwithfire.com or talking to their local fire service representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for joining us with us today and speaking on behalf of Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month. All right, we're going to move on to item eight E. And Madam Vice Chair, will you please read that for us?
I certainly will. Thank you. Of course, wildfire is a problem, no matter where you live in our greater community. So this one really relates to the Lake Tahoe's environment. Whereas, wildfire significantly impacts Lake Tahoe's environmental, economic, and social well-being. And whereas, residents of Lake Tahoe's fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas. And whereas, residents must be encouraged to move from the expectation of being protected from wildfire to the understanding that they may, they must be prepared to survive wildfire. And whereas, residents that implement appropriate pre-fire activities improve the survivability of their homes during wildfire. And whereas, residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to insist, to resist ignition. And now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners supports the month of July 2020 as the Lake Tahoe Fire, Wildfire Awareness Month, and this year's theme, Fight Fire with a Plan, as a means for education and a call for residents of Washoe County to act now to reduce the wildfire threat and prepare for wildfire. Lake Tahoe Wildfire Awareness Month, dated this 19th day of May 2020, and signed by our Chair, Bob Lucy. So, Mr. Chair, you know, one of the concerns about Lake Tahoe, of course, is if a fire comes in, how do you get out? There's really limited numbers of ways in and out of the basin, and so that is a very big concern. So being prepared and having a plan for not just making sure you have defensible space around your facility, your home, your business, whatever you have up there, but having a plan for how to get out and how to make sure that you're going in the right direction to get out of there is extremely important. And so I'm really pleased to have it, and I'm assuming Chief Ryan Summers is still on, since he's representing Lake Tahoe?
Yes, he is. Chief Summers?
Correct, I'm here. And thank you again for including the Tahoe Basin. And Commissioner Burke Pigler, I can't say enough and emphasize enough everything you talked about with the plan and all of our logistical issues up here. So yes, now's the time to make this plan, get everybody on the same page. One thing to note is that we are working on pre-attack plans for the entire Tahoe Basin, thanks to the Parasol Foundation. And we can make those plans available to the Commissioners, but they are going to be mostly to help other agencies that do come and help us, as Chief Moore mentioned, with our robust, automatic aid and mutual aid of what to do with those citizens so we can get them out of harm's way. This proclamation definitely brings the planning to light, and again, we do appreciate it, and thank you again.
Thank you, Ryan. And then Chief Baker, are you with us by chance? Tahoe Douglas Fire Chief Scott Baker? All right. All right, thank you. And Chief Summers, we really appreciate it. And I can't say that you have done a tremendous amount of work up there protecting the citizens of North Lake Tahoe. And I want to thank you for your time that, and also Vice Chair Burke Pigler, you know, with her continued advocacy for that area and what we need to do to approach a safe community up in the Incline Village, North Lake Tahoe area. So with that, we will move on. This, we're not going to take a motion on this because this is not, we did not make that. We will fix that in the next, in a future meeting. But we want to take a minute to thank everybody for participating for the proclamations today. And we'll move on, so we're moving on to item nine, which is our donations. So, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me read through these donations, which, once again, as our illustrious Commissioner Jung always reminds us how fortunate we are to have people who care so much about our community that they make donations. And I just second that so many times over. So 9A is a recommendation to accept donations in the amount of $32,923.92 and in-kind donations estimated value of $19,733.60 from various businesses, organizations, and individuals on behalf of our Regional Parks and Open Space Program and facilities. Really a great program, and so glad that people are involved in that. 9B is a recommendation to accept a one-time donation value of $1,752 from Western Nevada Supply for materials used at the Edison House site in response to COVID-19. Once again, Western Nevada Supply, as do many of our different organizations and businesses here in Reno, have stepped up at a time of need for the county and for the citizens of the county, and we want to thank them so much for that. 9C is a recommendation to accept a one-time appreciation gift donations estimated value of $6,247 from private citizens for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. And thank you very much for that, the sheriff and his wonderful dogs, as well as his wonderful deputies. You notice I put the dogs first, sorry guys.
Right, I always, you always do.
Are well-supported. 9D1 is a recommendation to accept a donation from Grace Community Church of Reno, a nonprofit religious organization, to the Washoe County Human Services Agency in the amount of $50,000. Let me repeat that, in the amount of $50,000 to support clients who have completed the Crossroads Program and their transition back into the community and reunification. You know, Grace Church has been there for us on a number of different issues. They've helped us out at our, before on our Crossroads properties and projects, and now at our It's Our Place project. We can't thank them enough. They're really a great community partner. 9D2 is a recommendation to acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimated market value of $1,640. And two, accept donations to Washoe County Human Services Agency to support child welfare activities in the amount of $1,680, retroactive for the period of February 7, 2020 through March 31, 2020. Once again, people in our community stepping forward to help take care of those who are in need, and we are just so grateful for that. And then finally, 9D3 is a recommendation to, one, acknowledge various items donated totaling an estimated market value of $1,450. And two, accept donations to the Human Services Agency Senior Services Fund to support operations of the Washoe County Senior Centers in the amount of $2,007.50, retroactive to the period of February 22, 2020 through April 22, 2020. I mean, this, all of these donations are fabulous, absolutely fabulous. Anytime you're giving money to seniors, you're giving money to underprivileged children, you're, you know, you're continuing to help and support our community. We are so blessed to have so many citizens here in Washoe County who are working with us, and I just want to thank all of them for all of these donations.
Couldn't agree more. And I think in such a challenging time, and when businesses are challenged to make money and have been without for so many, so many months, we still find those businesses that were able to donate and they can donate. And my, Rick Ravelio and Western Nevada Supply and Grace Church and Pastor Dan, they have been just tremendous for Washoe County. They've continued to give time and time again. I can't thank them enough for their continued donations and support of our community. It's just really important that we continue to do business, and it's because of those individuals. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to accept. Is that in the form of a motion?
Mr. Chair, that was in the form of a motion.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have any public comment? All right, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on to our consent agenda, item 10. Mr. Manager, the consent agenda is ready and in the packet. Is there any discussion from any of the Commissioners on the consent agenda? Yes?
Mr. Chair, I want to take the opportunity to point out here that these are, that 10A is related to district special fund disbursements in the amount of $10,000 by yourself, Commissioner Bob Lucy, $5,000 grant to the Food Bank of Northern Nevada to purchase food to aid the organizations, excuse me, COVID-19 response, and $5,000 grant to the Children's Cabinet Emergency Fund to support families affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you so much for that. That is really quite wonderful. Thank you. And so I just wanted to make sure we got that on the record.
Thank you, Madam. I appreciate that. Seeing any other questions in regards to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Motion by Vice Chair, second by that. Do I have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on, Mr. Manager, to item 11. This is our public hearing, so we are going to move into that. So, Mr. Manager.
All right, Mr. Chair, this is your public hearing on the intent of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners to issue general obligation limited tax Nevada Shared Radio System Bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues in the maximum principal amount of $15 million to acquire, construct, improve, and equip building projects as defined in NRS 244A.019 within the county, providing the manner, form, and contents of the notices thereof, providing other matters properly related thereto, and providing the effective date hereof. We do have Assistant County Manager Valetich and Budget Manager, oh, sorry, Bond Counsel Kendra Follett available on Zoom if there are any questions. However, as I understand this item, this is really to take public comment on this specific item as a process for the issuance of bonds. So with that, I request that you go ahead and open the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. We'll open the public hearing now. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment signed in on item 11?
No, sir.
All right, do we have any from Zoom? This is a housekeeping item. The Commission did hear this in previous meetings. I don't believe there are any questions by any Commissioners. I have no Commissioner signed in or noting for a further discussion on this. Commissioner Jung or Commissioner Hartung?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right, so at this time, I will, since we've had the public hearing and there are no public, we'll bring it back to the board, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, it's my understanding from Bond Counsel that they don't need the motion that's in the staff report as we already had the public hearing today?
Perfect.
Perhaps if I'm incorrect, Bond Counsel can pop on?
I'm not getting, I'm not getting waved down by the DA's here, so I believe you are correct, Madam Clerk, that there is no need for that. So we will move on. If there are no public comments and no, we will move on and close item 11 and move on to item 12. Mr. Manager?
All right, Mr. Chair, item number 12 is the public hearing discussion and possible action on the Washoe County tentative budget, as well as possible changes to the adoption of the final budget for fiscal year 2021, and approve the changes to position control for fiscal year 2021 indicated on attachment A. So with that, we do have Assistant County Manager Valetich and Budget Manager Lori Cook on Zoom available for this item.
Okay. We will open the public hearing for discussion. This is mandated by NRS for us to do this. We have, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments signed in on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Do we have any public comment from Zoom? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Are there any questions for either Assistant County Manager Valetich or Budget Manager Lori Cook in regards to this item at this point? Seeing none. Commissioner Jung, Commissioner Hartung?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion approved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Jung. I have a second from Vice Chair Burke Pigler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung and Commissioner Hartung voting in the affirmative via telephonically. Please affirm your votes on the, on the screen. It shows the affirmative for all of the individuals. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us to our final public comment, sir.
That's right, Mr. Chair. Item number 13 is public comment. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person. They may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. on and off the commission agenda. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have two. We have a voicemail from Ann Marie Grant that was originally sent for Item Number 6, I believe, but since we didn't take public comment on that item, we were going to play it now.
Okay.
County Commissioners Meeting, 10/19/2020, Agenda Item 6, Ann Marie Grant's sister, Thomas Purdy, hogtied by Reno PD and asphyxiated to death by multiple Washoe County deputies, while still hogtied at the jail, 10/4/2015. The report regarding COVID-19 is appreciated. After all, we do want to make sure the commissioners are fulfilling their obligations under NRS 211.020. I just wish I didn't have to remind them constantly. The well-being of the community members in your custody is extremely important to me, given the fact my brother, Thomas Purdy, Nico Smith, and Justin Thompson were all killed by deputies at Par. No, this wasn't during your tenure balam. However, the same medical vendor who was providing services in regards to COVID-19, NazCare, was and still is. I find it absolutely appalling that you took $2,000, $2,000 campaign contributions from NazCare days before the election took place. Given the fact their contract was up, and it was going before the commissioners whether to extend it or not. No shock, it got extended. Apparently, you think 14-plus deaths in two years under their medical care is doing a good job. Well, you were lining your pockets during election time. Adam Hopkins was at my hotel as I flew in from Boston, and he was there asking me about my brother and trying to ensure, if elected, no other inmate would be killed by deputies in the jail under his watch. I would like to continue to see how COVID-19 is being handled at Par. Social media is a good place to find that information, however, your agency seems to have blocked me from the sheriff's page on Facebook. I emailed you regarding this and received no response. Perhaps you can straighten that issue out today, now that I know for sure you have been made aware. You had four deaths since you took office. I would like to know where the report's mandated by NRS 211.030. There's no passing the buck. Your office needs to take responsibility for the four deaths that occurred under your watch. If you keep promoting DUI, committing community member assaulting deputies like Jason Wood, I fear only more deaths inside and outside the jail are certain. I don't want another family to have to remove their brain-dead family member off life support because of inadequate medical staff and incompetent excessive force-using deputies. I gave the commissioners pages and pages upon comments from Washoe community members about the treatment they received in your facility. You may want to take a look at them. Thank you.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I do have an email we just received from Jeff Church. I understand he's on Zoom, but he prefers that I read the email. Is that correct? Okay. This email is from Mr. Jeff Church. It was just received to us here in chambers a few moments ago. Records show that in January 2019, voluntarily agreed to be tax assessed to subsidize the downtown Reno BID/DRP. Washoe County's assessment totaled $32,691. I believe that figure went up significantly in July 2019. I urge this to stop. Why? In view of the subsidy of the crime lab, Raven, homeless center, and so many others, why are we giving away free Washoe dollars to a private 501(c)(6) advocacy group? It is improper to spend tax dollars on an advocacy group in violation of the First Amendment rights of taxpayers that may disagree with the DRP. The governor declared a fiscal emergency. As a result of the coronavirus shutdown, that means Washoe faces a serious fiscal emergency and needs to cut spending. Word on the street is that an end is near on the Incline Property Tax refund, and Washoe faces a second emergency. Act now to cut spending, including this free giveaway in excess of $32,691. Jeff Church, Reno Tax Revolt. And that's all the public comment we have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. Do we have any public comment via Zoom? Seeing no public comment via Zoom, we will go to Item 14. Mr. Manager.
Item 14 is the Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates. Can include Boards and Commissioners' Updates. Request for information or topics on future agendas.
Do, Mr. Manager, you have anything to add? Commissioner Hartung, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jung just texted me, and she doesn't have anything to add either. Either Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Vice Chair Burke Bigler? All right. One last thing, everybody. Please enjoy your Memorial Day weekend. Please stay safe, stay open. Remember, be conscientious, be humble to your fellow citizens and residents out there on behalf of Washoe County, where we are all looking forward to seeing a safe individuals on the other side. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.